February 16th, Outer County Com- Commissioners Meeting will now come to order. I'll call Mr. Johnson for prayer.
Let's pray, please. Heavenly Father, again, we, we come to you and we just appreciate this opportunity to make our petitions known. This evening, we especially lift up to you, our Chairman Godfrey Williams, who's not feeling well, we just pray that your hand would be upon him. Lord, honestly, we don't know why good people go through such difficult times, but we know that you will never seek your glory at our eternal expense. With all things worked for the good of those who love you, we're called according to your purpose. We pray this evening, we'll be called to your purpose, the purpose of serving you and the people of this county. We'll do so in a manner that will honor you and serve them well, and we ask it in Christ's name, amen.
And now, stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Praise allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call Mr. Mashin for adjustments to the agenda.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I don't have any adjustments to the agenda this evening.
Okay, thank you, sir. Appointments before the Board, Central Island Council of Governments, Cindy Kincaid, is she here? Yes, ma'am, if you'll come on up.
Good evening. I'm Cindy Kincaid, Regional Ombudsman with Central Island Council of Governments with the Area Agency on Aging. And I'd like to take a moment to recognize the volunteers who were with me tonight from our Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee and the Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee, Alan Singerman, Kathy Smith, and Sharon Muller. Anna Rice from the Council on Aging, as well as Donna Osborne and Kelly McMillan from the Department of Social Services, Adult Home Specialist, serves as the backup agents for these committees. I want to thank the commissioners for the volunteers that you have appointed to work on behalf of the Iredell County residents on, on these committees. Let me share briefly the role of the ombudsman in working with your committees. We have roughly 250 volunteers in our nine-county region, and they are part of over 1,800 statewide volunteer advocates. Iredell County volunteers serve the adult care and the nursing home facilities. These volunteers receive 15 hours of initial orientation and in-facility training, and they receive an ongoing eight-hours training throughout the year, through both quarterly business meetings and their attendance at conferences. The Regional Ombudsman Program provides several services to the volunteers. We conduct their quarterly training, we provide technical assistance and explanation and possible interpretations of the North Carolina and federal regulations and the residents' rights issues, we provide assistance in organizing residents or family councils within our homes, and we offer guidance and direction in complaint resolution. The community advisory committees are mandated through the North Carolina General Statute and are legislatively empowered as a resident advocate, making them the only agency that has the residents as their focal point for their work. They accomplish this advocacy by making quarterly visits to all the homes to discuss residents' rights with the residents directly, working with administrators, families, and residents on specific concerns or requests, and developing special projects. Region F has grown to over 15,000 long-term care beds, making it the largest in the state. Iredell County has 739 nursing home beds and 774 adult care home beds. This county has not experienced any new growth in either their nursing homes or their assisted living facilities, although we have had one facility, Heritage Place, which converted their building to be a special locked unit to provide care for residents with dementia. I want to highlight some of the work done by these committees from the report that was submitted for your review. We hosted a very successful residents' rights celebration at the Rocky Mount United Methodist Church, and we appreciate the attendance of the public officials who took time out of their busy schedules to attend. These committees made several visits to area facilities outside of their quarterly visits, providing activities, supplies, and helping to coordinate community volunteers. Our nursing home committee worked with Ben Garrison from ICATS to coordinate transportation for our residents to increase our participation in this year's residents' rights celebration. We'd like to thank Ben and the drivers who made it possible for some of the residents to attend our event that have not had the opportunity in past years. The group benefits from the attendance of the adult care home specialists, Donna Osborne and Kelly McMillan from the Department of Social Services, at their quarterly training. They're able to share information on the quality of life for the residents that help both the committee and DSS in their efforts, working closely to protect the residents' rights. Some of the biggest challenges that the committees were able to identify this year is not having full committees make it difficult to fully accomplish the mandates of this program. There are currently vacancies on both the adult care home and the nursing home committees. The reluctance of some of our facilities to follow through on suggested changes brought forth by the committees. Another trend we've seen is the rising number of younger residents with mental illness who are now calling our assisted living facilities home, and the challenges that these residents pose to staff and some of the senior residents. And finding volunteers who are willing and capable of spending the time required, understanding that this is a committee that is a working committee and not just a committee in name, fulfilling the mandates of this committee prior to their appointment and understanding what's expected. The committee would like to invite each of you to attend an in-facility visit with the volunteers, giving you an opportunity to have a firsthand look at some of the problems and issues that we deal with, and to meet the residents who call these facilities home. I'll be happy to entertain any questions that anybody might have.
Any questions for Ms. Kincaid? Thank you, Ms. Kincaid.
Thank you.
We will now go into a public hearing. Mr. Ro- Mr. Rose?
Uh, Mr. Chairman and Board of Commissioners, uh, it's with great pleasure, uh, that, uh, I'm here tonight with, uh, Mark Chambers, who's General Manager of Triad Racing Technologies' Engine Plant. I'm here tonight to, uh, tell you a little bit about the project and this opportunity. Although the company has not made a final decision yet, um, we are trying to get approval and seeking approval for, uh, an incentive agreement that would allow, um, this company to move its engine facility to Mooresville, where they will be leasing a facility with a lease-to-own opportunity. Um, they will be, uh, investing $3 million in equipment, and they will be moving, uh, adding jobs to the community neighborhood of 56 jobs that average $33 an hour, which is quite a bit higher than our county average. Um, with that, uh, I'd also like to ask Mr. Chambers to tell you a little bit about Triad and, and their business.
Thanks, Ro- Yeah, and just to, uh, to add a little more to that, basically, Triad, what we do, we, uh, are kind of a design developer testing manufacturer supplier of NASCAR-related engines, primarily Toyota teams. Uh, we supply 10 to 15 teams now in the NASCAR Truck Nationwide Cup Series and also the ARCA Series. In addition to that, we also do, uh, body stampings, parts, pieces, uh, for all the teams to build their cars, trucks, what have you. Uh, that's our core business, and we're also looking to, um, diversify a little bit and move into some other automotive areas that will branch just kind of out of the NASCAR area, but then supplement or, you know, use our expertise in engine development and quick manufacturing and turn around time, so. We look for a, uh, opportunity to, uh, move down here and get more and run our core customer base and, uh, expand from there. Happy to take any questions as well, so.
Thanks, sir. Any questions?
So, as you can tell, Motorsports has been, uh, very good to Mooresville and South Iredell County and also, uh, the county in general. And with the, uh, uh, the recent well-publicized downturn in, in that industry, we are very pleased to have an opportunity to add, uh, these kind of highly skilled, highly paid positions to, uh, to Iredell County. So with that, I respectfully request, uh, uh, that, uh, you all approve a incentive agreement that would be, uh, worth $43,736 over a five-year period of time. Um, and, uh, with that, uh, that's what my request is this evening, sir.
Thanks, sir. Any questions before we move forward? If not, uh, this is a public hearing. Is anyone in audit wishing to speak in favor or against this request? Not? I'll consider this public hearing closed. Entertain the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion we approve this request, and, uh, Mr. Chambers, I want to thank you for your firm's willingness to consider Iredell County, and I understand, Mr. Rogerson, I don't believe you folks have finalized your decision, and, uh, I'm sure you found him good to work with, and I'm sure if there's any remaining concerns, he'll address them, and if he needs any assistance from him, I want you to feel assured that we're here to assist him in any way we can, to ameliorate any concerns you may have. And thank you again, Mr. Rogerson, for your work, and, uh, Mr. Chambers, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Okay, the motion's been made. All in favor of the motion? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
No.
Okay, ayes have it, two, one.
Uh, thank you very much.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Smith, I believe it's up next. Excuse me, Mrs.
Mr. Chairman, this is Mary Nash Rusher, representing the law firm that's presenting this.
Good evening. My name is Mary Nash Rusher. I'm a bond attorney with the firm of Hunter and Williams. We are representing the Iredell County Industrial Facilities and Pollution Control Financing Authority in this financing. Um, we come before you today for a public hearing regarding the issuance by the Authority of Recovery Zone Facility Bonds and the amount of $9,100,000, and the proceeds of which would be loaned to Providencia USA for it to construct a 90,000-square-foot manufacturing facility in the county. This project has been before you before, as you may recall, in December. The county considered what to do with its allocation of $18,159,000 in Recovery Zone Facility Bond allocation, which was part of, part of the stimulus bill. Of that amount, uh, the county approved the allocation of $9,001,000 to the Providencia USA project. Um, the project is moving forward. The North Carolina rules require that they get on the local government commission agenda by May, and so they are in the process of doing that. The approval that is asked of you this evening is the, the same as the approval that's required for industrial development bonds. These are just conduit bonds. The autho- Neither the Authority nor the county has any liability whatsoever for the repayment of these bonds. There's no taxing power pledged. The Authority simply acts as a conduit that allows the company to borrow at a tax-exempt rate. So, uh, a notice of public hearing was published 14 days ago in the local paper, and you're, you are required, in order for these bonds to be issued, the county commissioners have to pass a rev- resolution approving in principle the issuance of the bonds, um, after the public hearing. And I'm happy to answer any questions. I also have Mike Smith from the Greater Statesville Economic Development Corporation and Mark Jones from Providencia here, if you have any questions about the project itself.
Thank you, Ms. Rusher. Do we have any questions for Ms. Rusher? If not, this is a public hearing. Does anyone in audit wish to speak in favor or against this request? Please do so at this time. If not, I'll consider this public hearing closed, and I will entertain a motion. Hope you don't have any comments, did you?
No. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I, I don't have any comments. We, this is, uh, as Ms. Rusher said, this is, uh, uh, very similar to, uh, industrial revenue bond that we've done many times in the past. Uh, the county is not issuing these bonds, the government's not issuing the bonds, they're being issued by the Authority. The county's taxing authority is not pledged, uh, the government's taxing authority is not pledged, uh, bonds will be secured by, um, a bank, a letter of credit from a A-rated bank.
Okay. Just a key, do you have?
Well, a motion to approve the resolution? Is that what you need? Yes. Yes, sir.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the resolution? Any questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed likewise. Thank you, Ms. Rusher. Mr. Mayor, thanks, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The item I have to bring before you tonight, one of the items that I have is, uh, something that you've heard before, this is the Exit 42 Roadway Protection Overlay Proposal. At the first February meeting, I had asked that this be postponed until this meeting to give me a little bit more time to work with the property owners. And during that time, we have been, uh, fairly successful working together, uh, although we did not come to consensus. I have made several changes to the draft and, which I've submitted to you, and in lieu of going through the entire document, I'll just give you the highlights, and if you have any specific questions, I'd be glad to answer those.
Mr. Chairman? I'd like to put this off.
Mr. Smith? Give us one minute. Go ahead, let's keep.
I'd like to put this off until the second meeting in March, if that's okay with everybody. I believe it's okay with Mr. Johnson.
Okay.
And, uh, I'm not sure what the pres- the procedure is to, so that we can do that, or do we need to do anything?
I think it would be a motion to table to a time certain.
Okay, so do we need to make a motion to do something first, and then a motion to table that?
No, I don't think so.
Just to table.
Okay. The, the motion, then, is to, uh, is to table the discussion of the issue until the second meeting in March.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Johnson?
Just a statement, I want to thank Mr. Smith for his hard work on this. He's, he's poured a lot of time into it, he's put a lot of effort. Quite frankly, at the staff level, he's, he's done about all he can do. I think it's moved from the technical aspect to the policy aspect. It's time to make a decision, but the decision's gonna be, have to be made between the amended proposal and some of the concerns that the property owners still have, and I'm hopeful they can be resolved, but they haven't been, but that's, the fact that they haven't been is no reflection on, uh, Mr. Smith's hard work. So, I, I support the motion to postpone it to the second meeting in March.
Okay, the motion is to table to the second meeting in March. Any additional questions concerned? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Got two more for you.
Sure.
Second item I have is a road abandonment. Um, this is, uh, small pe- a small piece of road, it's 170 linear feet, and it's, sits in front of Kiwanee, uh, here in Statesville. This, actually, this section is still under public maintenance and has been requested to be released and, and turned over essentially to Kiwanee. Their gate is somewhere in here, so it's something that they are already in charge of taking care of, and they have asked for this, uh, through NCDOT. Um, this, this arrangement was made when this intersection was reconfigured several years ago, and based on our analysis of this, we find it in, uh, in order and recommend approval.
Okay. Any questions? Ms. Smith?
Motion approved.
Motion to approve? Okay, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed likewise. Carry on, Ms. Smith.
And the last item is, uh, another request that I'd brought before you at our last meeting and went back to get a little bit more information. Um, this request is another road abandonment, and it is between, the, the split between 21 and 115, between, well, just north of Mooresville. Uh, this is a little cut street that's located behind the gas station, and the property owners on either side have asked via, uh, DOT for this to be abandoned and turned back over to the property owners. Uh, DOT is recommending in favor of this because of the safety implications. And one of the questions last time was what was gonna happen to this road. In this situation, this will go back to the property owners. DOT will come in and tear up the two ends to make sure that no one can get onto the road, and if, if there's still a problem, they'll tear up the pavement on the entire thing. So, um, essentially, just revert back to the property owners. And another one, we, we find it in order and would recommend approval.
Okay. Any questions or additional information? Okay.
Motion approved.
Motion to approve? If nothing else, um, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Smith?
Mr. Chairman, I have the next two items. Uh, Item D is a request for approval of the January, uh, 2010 refunds and releases. The tax assessor has presented those to me. Uh, he claims them to be in order and that no county commissioner is involved in any of these properties, and, uh, your approval is recommended.
Okay, do you all have a motion?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to approve? Any questions? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those approv- Those disapprove.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, the next item is a request, uh, for the commissioners to approve, uh, declaring surplus, surplus, a canine unit, uh, and to, uh, allow the purchasing agent to sell the, um, animal to the, uh, by private negotiated sale, and, uh, the animal would be sold to the, uh, handler of this, um, uh, animal for, I guess, they've used it for about eight, well, since 2002, and, um, the handler is Deputy Derek Stutz, and this would allow, uh, the purchasing agent to sell by, um, private negotiated sale directly to Deputy Stutz. We've done this several times in the past when, um, the, uh, animal just has outlived its usefulness as a, um, as a canine unit for the Sheriff's Department.
Okay. Any questions?
Motion approved.
Motion to approve? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those approv- Those disapprove. Motion approved.
Uh, I think Rick has the next item to present from the Sheriff's Department.
Good evening. Tonight, the sheriff has, uh, we wanted to transfer $513,000 from our seize funds to go ahead and purchase 15 vehicles for the sheriff's office. This is gonna be replacement vehicles for some high-mileage, uh, vehicles that we have out on the road now. The sheriff has determined we need to go ahead and try to get these vehicles replaced. One, due to the fact that we've, we may be running into some, uh, longer waiting periods to get some patrol cars in here. Some of these cars has got some very high mileage on it, and for safety purposes, we wanted to go ahead, and the sheriff has agreed to move the seized money to, uh, purchase these. Eleven of these vehicles will be, uh, regular cars, two of them will be, uh, SUVs, and the other two will be used, they will be used vehicles we're purchasing for special ops. If you have any questions, I can...
Any questions? If not, entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve this request. Mr. Dowlon expressed the board's thanks to you and Sheriff Redmond for your willingness to do this. I know it's, uh, may have had other designs for this money, but during these times of budgetary shortfalls and so forth, I, I really appreciate it's a great service to the taxpayers to do this, and I want to thank you for that. So, I'm, I move that we approve this.
Okay. Motion to approve? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Madam Chair, Susan Blumstein, Finance Director, has Item G.
I've included in your package a copy of this year's audit contract from Martin Storms and Associates. We are required by state regulations to undergo an annual single audit. Same price is quoted for this year as in last year at $39,000, which is a $6,000 discount since we've started doing the report ourselves. Seek your approval.
Any questions? Motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Okay. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chair, Michelle Hepler will present Item A. She's representing the Recreation Department tonight.
Okay.
Good evening. Um, I'm here before you guys tonight to request approval for a rate increase for participants that are, are attending our outdoor education programs. In your packet, you should have copies of our new proposed rate, as well as our old rates. If you'll notice, that does identify that this is the first time these fees or these participation fees have been increased since 2007.
Does Hepler, will he help offset some of the costs?
It does. This, these costs, um, the cost per person covers the cost of the program.
Okay. Any additional questions? Okay. We have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, motion been made to approve? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tracy Jackson will present the next item, which is, uh, will require a little bit of presentation here and some explanation of what we're, what we're proposing to the commissioners that you give us authorization to proceed on. Tracy?
It, uh, it won't be as high-tech as you may expect. Uh, we don't have internet access on this podium, so it's gonna be fairly low-tech, actually. Old-fashioned, just stand here and tell you what it is. So, what we're coming to for tonight is to request approval to sign an agreement with CGI Communications for a, uh, video showcase of Iredell County. Basically, what that would be is a, uh, graphic interface on the county's website. It could be, uh, a symbol like the county seal, or perhaps, uh, a photograph of some, some item or some, something of significance that relates back to Iredell County. And as a, as a visitor to the site, you'd click on that, it would open up another window that would have a list of different topics. That could be anything that we would like for it to be that describes Iredell County. From there, you pick a topic, it would open up a video showcase, and around this showcase would be the different advertisers. And that's basically how this is paid for. It'd be no cost to the county. Uh, this company will go out and seek advertisers, it could be hospitals, it could be private business, what have you. An individual can click on that icon for that business and find out information about it, um, or they can click on the video, and then it'll roll right into whatever topic is on that video, basically. So, um, the main reason we're coming to you is because this would be a, uh, an ongoing commitment. It would renew automatically, uh, year after year unless the county decided to terminate at some point. If you may have questions, I'd be glad to try to answer whatever I can.
Mr. Jackson, in case for Ms. Hepler, just follows a list of the fees, we'd be able to see that? Would we be able to see that by clicking and looking for recreation? All the updated fees and that type of thing? Will you have that information?
That'd be a little bit different. I mean, we can get that on the county website, but this can be a pretty short video if one understands it's basically a minute.
But it'd basically be about recreation, is what you're saying?
It could be whatever topic we'd like for that to be, right?
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, we actually presented this idea, the concept, to the department heads at a recent meeting to see how many of those felt that there would be some interest. And it really can be on recreation, it can be on health, it can be on any particular service that the county provides. And, and the best example that I can give of what it would be like, and I'm sorry we can't go online because there's several counties that have already done this, and if we'd have been able to go online, you could have seen exactly how it worked. But the best example that I can give is similar to what has happened in the past when, when someone would come in and do like the county map. And they would make those maps available to the public and so forth, but the person that produced the map would sell ads to go around the map, and, or similar to the Images Magazine, which is about the community, but it doesn't cost the community anything, but the, there's advertisement, there's articles about the county or, or our agencies. It can be about elections, it can be about any service that we provide. And they will come in and actually film a professionally-done video, and, and that's done at no cost to us. But the only thing we have to do is to offer them a letter of introduction to allow them to go to different businesses as it would, as he said, if we, let's say we did one on the Health Department, and he may sell, they may sell ads to the hospital or to some of the health providers. And, and if they don't sell anything, the county still gets the product. We're not involved in, in selling, we don't have to go with anybody or do anything like that, just give them a letter of introduction, and that's all the county is required to do. And if they don't even sell one ad, we still, they still agree to give us the product. Again, there's several counties have already done this. It's really done, I, I think, very, very tastefully, and the quality of what I've seen, when you go online to see it, it has done, it's done very well. So we're just asking your permission to let us go ahead and pursue this. And again, there's no cost or obligation to the county, other than they would want a letter of introduction from the county as they go out to, to the community to sell the products.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Smith. Do we have a motion to approve?
I don't see any way we lose, Mr. Chairman. I make the motion we approve.
Okay. Heard the motion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Last item, Mr. Chair, is a request for approval of the February 2nd, 2010 minutes.
Motion approved.
Motion to approve? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Reminder list for appointments for committees and boards. Favorable board adjustments. Does we need one appointment? Do we have any one? And we've tabled, I think, the last two times. Would you like to table it again?
Yes, sir, I make the motion we table it.
Okay. Am I missing one?
No, sir. I think under appointments, we have the Nursing Home Advisory Committee.
Okay.
Here we have the reminder list, I believe, here, and then we have an MO 13.
Yeah. Okay. Nursing Home Advisory Committee, one appointment?
Mr. Chairman, I would nominate Ms. Brenda Rumpel.
Okay, any additional nominees?
I'd make a motion we close Florida nominations, appoint Ms. Rumpel by acclamation, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee, two appointments? Anyone for those for that committee?
I'd make a motion we table these appointments, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Any questions? All in favor of the, of the table, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Animal Governance Committee, one appointment?
Nominate Dr. Kim Ball.
Okay, any additional nominees? All in favor of Dr. Kim Ball, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we'll move right, right along. We'll go back to Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee. We said we had one available, see that here? Any, any idea for that particular one? No?
I'd make a motion we table that.
Motion to table. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Do you have any other Crime Prevention Council, five appointments?
Motion to table.
Okay, motion to table? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Chairman, these have already been tabled.
They've been tabled before?
Yes.
Okay. So this, we were trying to remind the list, and it's what this is. Okay. Okay. Any other, any unfinished business? Okay. We don't have a public comment period to the next meeting. How about new business?
I have one item, Mr. Chairman. I've handed a resolution that I received an email from Mayor of Mooresville in regard to our previous meeting where it suggested that we adopt a joint resolution between the county and the municipalities in the county concerning non-opayment.
Okay.
I've given that, a copy of that resolution to Ms. Moore. And if the rest of the board concurs, I would like for us to place that on our next agenda.
Okay, would you like to make a motion that we do that?
I'd make a motion that we do that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thanks, sir. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Any additional, Ms. Smith, how about your report? Do you like that?
I do have one item, just to, as information, and, and I guess the first appearance that you had from Cindy Kincaid kind of spurred this on, but we just recently received a report from the Division of Aging that shows the expenditures by county, the service and the expenditure of funds for the clients who are 60 years of age and, and older. In our, these are funds that are spent in Iredale County through different programs, the Department of Transportation, the Division of Aging, the Division of Medical Assistance, the Divisions of Mental Health and Development Disabilities, Services to the Blind, the Division of Social Services, and the Division of Vocational Rehabilitation. And when it's all totaled up, just in the year 2000, the fiscal year 2008 and '09, there was $39,791,845 that was spent for the benefit of the, our citizens who were in that category of 60 and above. And I just wanted to bring that to your attention because it was a report that just came out, that was made available to us this week. Other than that, we did have two items listed for closed session. However, none of the economic development directors are here, so maybe there was a misunderstanding as to whether or not that was for this meeting or for our future meeting. Mr. Popper, are you aware of anything that needs to go to the board tonight?
We had scheduled a matter of attorney-client privilege, I don't know.
I know, as far as economic development.
Oh, no, I'm not.
Okay. So then the other thing would be the attorney-client, which is GS 143, 318, 11A3.
Okay. Motion to go on closed session then. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. ...